All right. Good evening and welcome to the April 18th Board of Education meeting. If everyone would please join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will begin this evening with the report of the superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Thank you so much and good evening and apologies for our late start. That was just an incredible experience. So a big thank you to all of the students, faculty, staff, administrators, and parents who joined us in the gymnasium earlier this evening for the Critical Thinking Expo. We'll be hearing more about the expo and the work showcased momentarily from Dr. Tricia Murray and some guests, so I will keep my report brief. My 2023-2024 School District Budget Roadshow is well underway. Last Thursday, I presented at the Osborne. In the afternoon, I brought along some students to perform a few musical numbers from the recent production of Footloose, and the crowd cried encore after their songs. Strangely, they did not cry encore after I presented, but they were, it was very well received, they were very supportive, and I always enjoy the time with our neighbors at the Osborne. And yesterday, I attended a meeting at Community Synagogue and was made to feel very welcome. We had a great discussion, talked a lot about the budget, different programs, and just some general questions about the education world with the members of the group. There were folks in person and folks virtual. It's my first time back at Community Synagogue since they've finished all of the construction. It's absolutely beautiful, the work they've done, and they did offer space to us should we need it. And, you know, they have some great workrooms and it was wonderful to see Rabbi Grauper and everyone that was there. Tomorrow, I'll be a guest at the Rye Middle School PO meeting in the morning. Then, a quick jump, there was a rescheduled meeting today for the Midland PO to talk about the budget. Then we'll be making a stop at Rye Rec for the senior group over there, Spry, along with some Rye Middle School musicians. We have an instrumental performance that will be with me tomorrow, and I'm sure there will definitely be encores. We are always well-received at the Osborne, at Rye Rec. And last night, I know some of the board members were here, RyAct held a parent information event here in the MPR. The title was "Today's Marijuana Isn't Woodstock Weed." We didn't quite make it to Woodstock, but we did land in the 1980s in learning. But it was a terrific turnout, there were almost 50 parents here. And while I don't think most really know much about Woodstock other than what they've seen in the movies, Nancy Pasqual from RyAct gave a great presentation about current trends and prevention, followed by an informal back-and-forth, which was very informative. And there was lots of interesting information and lockboxes that folks took home with them. And tomorrow afternoon, right after school, Boys Rugby is hosting a team from St. Andrews College in South Africa for an exhibition match. And to my knowledge, and we did some research on this, this is the first such match at Rye High School, and it's quite an honor, as Rye is one of just three U.S. high schools that this top-ranked international rugby team is visiting. So join me in heading on down to Nugent Stadium tomorrow at 3:45 PM for this history-making event. And this Friday and Saturday, the Parsons Street Players are presenting the play Almost Main in three shows, Friday at 7:00, Saturday at 2:00, and Saturday at 7:00. So we hope to see you there. I know Dr. Murray will be attending one of the shows, and I'm sure it will be amazing. And also on Saturday is the Joint Board of Education and City Council meeting, after which the Board of Education trustees and I will be marching in the opening day parade to kick off spring baseball and softball seasons here in Rye. And this is one of those great traditions that you don't see in too many places, but here in Rye, and I look forward to it every year. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Great, thank you very much, and I definitely look forward to talking about the wonderful expo we just had. So with that, Dr. Byrne and Dr. Murray, Critical Thinking.
So that was quite an extraordinary experience, and for those who are watching at home and are not with us, the Rye Middle School gym was just filled with students and teachers and work, and we got to learn so much from so many of our students, from as young as kindergarten straight up to 12th grade. So the first group I spoke to was some 12th graders telling me about their work, and then I ended my night in the gym talking with kindergarteners about their work. It was an extraordinary experience. So, Dr. Murray, thank you for putting it together, and I'm sure everyone's looking forward to hearing all about this critical thinking work we've been doing in the district. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. So before I begin, I do again want to thank the students, the teachers, parents who came tonight, administrators. It really was wonderful to see how the critical thinking work has been playing out K-12, all the way from that first kindergarten project, those AP Studio Art students, 12th graders, it was quite an experience. So I hope you enjoyed that as well. So I'm going to be giving you just a brief presentation tonight. We had a presentation on critical thinking earlier in the year, but this is just to kind of serve as some context, so you can see how the work, the student work that you saw tonight really is playing out for the district. And I'm joined by some guests. We have Mr. Joe D. Giovanni, our middle school principal here with us tonight. We also have Mr. Nick Clare, he's our secondary instructional coach. Dr. Michelle Haken, she's the 8th grade English teacher, and Mrs. Rosie Marzicki, 2nd grade teacher at Osborne. So welcome and thanks for joining us. The critical thinking work is directly connected to the Rye commitment. Our overarching goal is to increase the level of critical thinking across content areas in order to further the work of the Rye commitment. And it really is a focus that we've been trying to hit, all the content areas with this work, and really all the grade levels, and not say that critical thinking starts, you know, at a certain grade level, but we really wanted to start even with our youngest students. And so the work that we've been putting together, as you saw tonight, really does begin in elementary school. And in order to support that, learning around critical thinking, we've been providing a lot of professional learning throughout the school year. And one strategy that we've been using is something called a learning walk. And we've been working at training our teacher leaders in what a learning walk is, or grade level leaders at the elementary school and our department coordinators, so they understand what that process is. And when they learned how to do a learning walk, they used a learning walk tool, which describes what critical thinking looks like and sounds like in a classroom. And it's really a collaborative learning process. We got some really nice feedback on it from those two groups. And so our next step is to get more teachers on board and experiencing that, so they can really use it as a tool for their own reflection and reflecting on their own professional practice. And then, Joe, we'll talk about the work that's been going on during the faculty meetings.
Good evening, everyone. So the first time this summer at our administration tree, all the administrators got together, and we had, we put together a K-12 plan for critical thinking. So elementary to secondary, we're all online each month, which is probably the first time that's ever happened that I could remember. So no matter what school it was, they all had similar, it was the same topic and similar strategies how to instruct the teachers in using the tools. So in September, we focused on, when school opened, from September to October, we really looked at what critical thinking looks like in a classroom, and we focused on skills and abilities with our staff. In November, we focused on dispositions and how to support critical thinking by all the different dispositions. In December and January, we focused on thinking routines. That was only supposed to be one month, but the teachers were so, they really wanted more work with it, we put it into two months. And how we walk students through challenges through all the different thinking routines and how people go about solving problems. February, we focused on divergent convergent questions. And March and April, we started to introduce the critical thinking tool that Dr. Murray was talking about, and the reasons why we're using it and how we're going to conduct classroom visits amongst the staff. So right now, in the middle school, high school, our staff are working through their departments to visit another teacher and use the tool to do, not observe them and have conversation at our June meeting, and then have a reflection on it. And then we'll focus on the divergent and convergent questions, which they use in their lessons. So when we come back and at the end of the year, we can put this all together, and then we'll start our work next year with critical thinking as well.
Thank you. And then in addition to that, we've also been focusing on critical thinking during our conference days, our November Day and our March Day, and Nick can talk about that work.
Sure. So the November Conference Day, we really looked at designing and critiquing our own critical challenges that teachers write in the classroom, and this was K-12. So we assessed critical challenges that teachers have already written, based on a set of criteria around critical thinking, and then also worked on some vertical alignment and collaboration amongst departments. So they were all working together to design tasks of different, small, medium, or large tasks that could span an entire unit or just be a part of a lesson, and then implement them throughout the year with support of everyone, really, especially their colleagues. And then in March, what we did was had a whole bunch of choice sessions for the teachers to attend in the morning. So they went to a couple of different sessions, all based on critical thinking, things like questioning or the thinking protocols. And then after, in the afternoon, they got back together with their department, shared their learning with their peers, and then just continued creating those critical challenges.
So we really overall had a very, really comprehensive program to the professional And part of that learning, we also wanted to make sure we had a clear definition for what critical thinking is as a district, and so we narrowed it down to these three bullets. It's, critical thinking is the act of deliberately analyzing information to make better judgments and decisions. It uses logic, reasoning, and creativity in order to draw conclusions, come to understanding, and then it also includes the skills of questioning, evaluating, interpreting, and synthesizing. And we used all of those understandings when we are developing activities or units to really bring out the critical thinking skills. So when you go into a classroom, you, and you want to kind of get an understanding of what does critical thinking look like and sound like, well, you would see teachers posing open-ended problems that require decision-making. It really all kind of starts with the type of problem or challenge that students are given. Teachers are providing resources with different perspectives, that's a really important piece. And in addition to that, teachers also really modeling how to ask questions, the importance of asking questions, the different types. They're teaching a language of critical thinking. And they're also promoting self-reflection and feedback. I know I heard a lot of the students talking about that tonight when they were talking about their projects, that reflection part. Students are using intentional process to make a decision. That's kind of was a shift for us this year. What's the actual thinking that they need to go through, the thinking routine, you heard those mentioned, in order to make that decision? They evaluate the resources and understanding those varying perspectives. They ask the purposeful questions, so while they're learning about how to do that, they themselves have to practice. They use that vocabulary and that language, and then they also engage in self-reflection and peer feedback. And that's just a list of the projects that you saw tonight. Hopefully you got to, you know, listen or hear, learn about all of them, but all of those projects had the characteristics of critical challenges in them. They asked students to make a decision, to solve a problem or create something. There are multiple good approaches to use, wasn't always one way. It required more than the retrieval of information, they actually had to apply their knowledge. It invited talk and collaboration. A lot of times you would see the kids either working in partnerships or like a small group, and also giving, and talking by giving each other feedback as well. And also, it was meaningful for the students. They really cared and seemed invested in the work, so we made it, you know, relevant for them. And to talk further, I'm going to have, pass it over to Rosie. She's going to talk about her bridge-building challenge with her 2nd grade class.
So part of, I'm used to using that in the classroom. So part of our Science 21 unit has the students examining about materials and properties of materials. They were posed this open-ended question of if you could create a structure that could hold the weight of 21 bears, what would it look like and why? What materials would you use and why? And students had to use their knowledge of understanding what is, the properties of the different materials they had to use, like popsicle sticks or cardboard, toilet paper rolls and tape, and design a structure that they felt would sustain the weight of those bears. And while we went through and created those designs and then tested them out, you can see in our picture, we sat together and tested them together as a group, and students reflected on the designs and said, you know, one thing they felt that this designer did well was that they utilized a specific material for a specific choice, and they gave them one piece of feedback of, you know, one thing you could try to do would be maybe to utilize more popsicle sticks to create a wider surface to hold a bigger platform for all your bears, because some of them fell off. And then some of them realized when they were building that they didn't create a flat enough surface area to work on, and that created like a rickety bridge, so some of the bears were rolling off the side. So they really enjoyed creating the structures and then also really thrived and did well with receiving and giving feedback to each other, and it was just a positive way to build that habit in smaller children.
Thank you. And Michelle, want to talk about the Citizen Action Project?
So for the 8th grade English and Social Studies collaborative project, this was actually a curriculum unit that Ally Firsick and Lisa Reifus and I designed over the summer as part of a BOSIS Learning and Technology Grant, and we had the opportunity to sort of sit and think about units that we had that we could collaborate more and share the ideas across the different units. So thinking from a time perspective, in January, February, my students are reading dystopian, both classic and contemporary dystopian texts, and in social studies, they're learning about imperialism. So we thought, how can we bring this together? It was a project that was guided by a lot of choice. Students chose the books that they wanted to read. We were working in the iLab, so we utilized that space to hold workshop times and then mini lessons and then break out into smaller groups. Students then were working in groups based on their book selections to then flush out their ideas from the dystopian texts and the different units that are themes within imperialism to help figure out what are some of those key themes or enduring issues, as we say in social studies, that are emerging from these topics and texts. And it was really the students that were pulling out their themes and extending the conversations that we were having through mini lessons. So there was a choice of book projects to show their thinking and understanding about the books that they were reading. Then in social studies, there were some just smaller research and elements that they were doing, and then the culminating project, students had choices of. But all students, after finishing the books and studying these different mini units, wrote a persuasive letter to a politician of their choice based on a topic that they saw connected within dystopia and imperialism. So we looked also at a lot of persuasion language and looked and studied speeches by Greta Thunberg and other people to understand ethos, pathos, logos, and curios, and how do we integrate that into our writing? And each student, if you looked around and visited our station, you saw book boxes, students made marketing book boxes, they also made infographics. In social studies, they made history talks and other like PSAs about their topics, and then all the students wrote an individual letter to somebody that they wanted to express ideas about, like, one student wrote about how there needs to be a curriculum on acceptance and kindness in school based on like the giver and the whole concept of sameness, how sameness is not okay, and then looked at what happened to the Native Americans and putting them into boarding schools and asking and expecting them to assimilate, and sort of carried all these ideas and bridged them together to talk about how, you know, we need, difference is okay, and accepting others and celebrating others' differences is key.
Thank you. So our next steps is really just to continue all this wonderful work. And every time we design a new unit, a new course, these are the types of tasks that we embed within those units. So the learning walks are, we're really just getting going right now with some of the training, so we are going to continue to do that and continue to grow that work. Our professional learning will be, while we kind of did critical thinking in sort of in general, and it covered a lot of topics this year, next year we'll be going more in-depth on certain aspects of critical thinking, and I think teachers will appreciate the choice that we're trying to build in with that and the differentiation. And as I said, you know, the curriculum's always constantly evolving and being redesigned, and this will be the top priority. So, thank you. Any questions?
I'd just love to ask it. So Rosie and Michelle, you both worked in spaces that did not exist two years ago. So maybe you can speak to what that afforded you in your teaching that maybe wouldn't have happened before or would have been much more challenging?
Yes, the makerspace is really nice. The students really had access to all the materials that they needed and that they wanted to choose to build their bridges, which I only have a limited amount in my classroom. They also had the ability to have different workspaces and collaborate and work with each other, but then also work within groups, and they would look at other students that were building and said, could you tell me why you're choosing to do this versus this? The new Promethean board that's in there is very, very fancy. I was afraid to use it, to be honest with you. I was like, I'm going to break it. So Kim Prasad helped me. But even having that to have like a timer built in place so that the kids could like finish their work in a timely fashion, but then also come back together and share their work samples and their process along the way, they were able to do a lot of things in there that we wouldn't have been able to do in our own classroom. It was a way to collaborate and foster some more critical thinking. So, thank you.
Yeah. The iLab is fabulous. My students want to move in full-time. And, you know, what's great about that is that here you have two classes combining together. So in terms of our biggest classes, we have 24 in each, so you're getting almost 50 students in that space, and it allowed, when we were planning out, like, maybe one day Ally is teaching a mini lesson on something and my students are just reading workshop time. So she would push into this, I'll say, the smaller conference room and use that for the mini lesson, and I'd have the bigger space for reading workshop where students were working on the desk on the floor. We can, during the collaborative discussions and activities, they might push into the smaller rooms, or when it came to students that need some additional support and scaffolding, our co-teacher would take a group into another conference room. So that flexible space was really key, and so many of the students really, in their own reflections about the project and the things that they did, really honed in on the space. And when are we going to be back there again? And can we just take it because we're the 8th graders and we want it? So it's really great. And we said, when we have the furniture, it'll be even more awesome. So.
My students actually all worked towards their class reward to go back to the makerspace and do another challenge. We did a Lego challenge in there. So, and now that they asked to go back again, so I have to find another challenge for them to do.
Thank you.
I'm curious about your experiences when you were asked to teach critical thinking to the 2nd graders. That's got to be a big change from what you probably started expecting when you were starting in 2nd grade teaching.
I'm trying to think how to answer this. No, I think it's not, it's not a shift in thinking so much as like, I think kids are always naturally curious and they want to push their boundaries. It's just knowing the right way to question them and push them further, and also as a teacher, to be comfortable with taking a step back and just observing at times. It's a little bit of a tango or a dance that you don't quite know the steps to, but you just, when you do it enough, then you kind of see the flow and the rhythm of it, and then the students start to see the power behind it and that they really do hold the key for unlocking a lot of that thinking themselves. A lot of the things that we've been doing in some of the district, Carrie Winderman offered the Building Thinkings Classroom class that I had taken over the summer, and working in those vertical surfaces, I had done some of the thinking tests with math in there, and then also used that type of structure to even examine about, like, when we did our social studies unit about what makes a good citizen, and then talking about role models and good leaders, and using those structures and thinking about that in terms of critical thinking was really helpful and powerful. I think it's just, it's like in all things, it takes lots of time and energy and looking at the curriculum that we have that is really good, and how do we make it, enhance it the best way possible, and when is it appropriate to do these things and not? It's just being allowed the gift of time to look and see.
Great, thanks.
I'd actually be interested in the 8th grade because as 2nd graders, right, you're an eager student, and 8th graders are sometimes a bit more reluctant. So how was that working?
You have to qualify it by saying that you own one.
Oh, I do. I own a reluctant 8th grader who, if he ever knew I was speaking about him in public, would have disowned me, but that's okay. And who, in all fairness, was part, was able to take part in this because he is in this wonderful class and had a great experience.
Thank you. You know, I think there's been a huge shift in education, primarily in the past decade, from, from an English teacher perspective, I always say, you know, I'm teaching the reader, I'm not teaching the book. And I feel like even in English, it encompasses reading, writing, critical thinking, speaking, listening. Like if you, I mean, in terms of the ISTI, International Society for Technology for Education, when they revised their standards, it wasn't, they're now innovative designer, creative communicator, and those, to me, are the skills that I want my 8th graders and all my students to have. So for me, there's, in, I'll say, the past decade, as an English teacher, my shift is teaching the individual, the reader, the communicator, to be creative, to be thinking deeply and less, trying to be less task-oriented. I mean, I've had the opportunity, working with Diane Cunningham and doing a Design Thinking Summer Program and Project for a year, and then this Learning Technology Grant and what schools can be, like, really to think about that shift in education. And my whole focus is about using reflection and feedback instead of grades to motivate students, and that's sort of where I lean in personally, from my own teaching perspective, so that my students are prepared not just for school and like high school, but beyond. I want them to be critical consumers of all information, whether we're talking about a piece of literature or a media text. I want them to be able to write all different types of genres. And by giving them choice, that's a motivator. By keeping the books that we're teaching, like, offering a mix of classic and contemporary, looking at topics that are relevant today, I think that all helps to encourage 8th graders, particularly as they are starting to question the world around them and authority, and hopefully not too much questioning of authority. But to really like apply. I have an 8th grader at home as well, I totally get it. But to apply there and try out the strength in a safe place like school, then that's really the.
I think, I think you're saying.
Not challenge authority.
No, but it also gives the kids a voice. Like, they feel like because they have the choice or they have the power to construct the things that they're being asked, and it's not me telling you how to do it, that they have more of a say and that they realize their voice and their ideas have worth, and that carries a lot of weight for students.
Well, and just to bridge on that, every single student that I stopped and talked to in that room, whether they were kindergarten students, 2nd grade students, or high school, middle school students, the confidence with which they presented whatever it was that they were working on, and how many of them said, it was trial and error, or I had to go back and do it again, but it was part of the confidence building, and you could see it in their eyes. But it was part of the confidence building and you could see it in their eyes. And they were communicating things that, I mean, no one had notes in front of them. They were just going and going and going and going. And it was phenomenal. Because that's, I think, a secondary, not secondary, but it's a byproduct that doesn't necessarily, we don't talk about it as much, but the confidence that every single one of them exuded and they were just so excited to talk about these things because of the autonomy and the creativity that they were able to put into it. And it showed at every level.
Yeah, the discussion with the fifth graders on the argumentative essay was amazing. So good.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
See, I didn't get to them. This is why, this is too short. It's too short.
So, you said I...
Yeah, I would second that. We need an hour next time.
Yeah. When you said you're teaching the reader and not teaching the book, I think that's one of the greatest lines. That is so topical right now. Because we're spending a lot of time, not us, but a lot of people seem to be worrying about the books way more than the readers. So, keeping focused on what our kids, what skills we're teaching them and what they need to do, that the critical absorbers of information, you know, critics of information, understanding where it comes from, we could do nothing more powerful for them than that. So, thank you.
Well, and that segues into a question I had. I mean, it seems that the focus on critical thinking in education, certainly in Rye, greater than it's ever been, which is phenomenal. Everything described here, absolutely phenomenal. We also don't have to look too far to see the opposite of critical thinking in the media, in politics, in social media, in the politicization of education. Is that a challenge that comes, I mean, especially, I would think, not with the younger kids, but like with older kids, with parents in terms of, that you guys face as you're trying to present these things? And sometimes there's noise outside that arguably runs the other direction?
There's always noise outside.
Just gotta blow it in another direction. It can get really good.
So... I mean, and as a district, we, I'll say, we, as part of this district, and been part of this district for more than 20 years, like, it is about the whole child. I mean, between the lectures and the conversations and the elective classes that we have in the middle school and the team model, that's all to support the students that we have in this community. And to give them not only the academic skills, but also like bring in those social emotional skills, you know, the collaboration between IC and the middle school, between our social worker and the parent communication workshops that she organizes. That's all to help with that noise and sort of for all of us to get through the noise and figure out how to mediate the noise to raise healthy, happy, young people, children who are gonna be successful. What you define as success is different for everyone.
I think the parents see that their kids are passionate and excited about something and that in turn makes them excited as well. And the kids in my classroom, I was told that we were fortunate enough to be selected to present and share. Right away, they were just, they dove in and they came up with the criteria of how they were gonna teach, what they were gonna say, and how they were gonna do their presentation. And I just, okay, what would you like to do and how do you think to do this? So, they pretty much had the autonomy over the whole, the actual experiment to the actual presentation. And that just plays into the whole child as well and building skills beyond just critical thinking. But if they can reflect and listen to others and then also be able to present about it and feel confident, it is really important as well.
One of your students that I talked to, and I said, you know, how was it? And she goes, ah, yeah, my brain hurts. I hear ya. And I said, well, you know, how, like, why? And she said, well, I just have to do a lot of thinking. I said, well, yeah, that's amazing. And when you, when you go back to the Rye commitment and you look at where we talked about, okay, thinking critically, and it encompasses the rest of that sentence, the rest of that paragraph, the effective communication, the collaboration, and the problem solving. And it is a lot of work that makes your brain hurt. And to know that in second grade and to already have that sense of stick-to-itiveness where I'm gonna build this elevator and I've spent two weeks building an elevator and, well, gosh darn it, it doesn't work, so now I gotta take it apart and I gotta build a new elevator. And, well, that only took me a week. That was amazing. And it's just the idea of persistence, but persistence with purpose because of connectedness. And that's what I saw in that room for the second graders that I talked to who were interested in making sure that their bears didn't fall off their bridge, to the seniors who on Friday at 10 o'clock in the morning are gonna be flying their airplanes across the front lawn of the high school. And I'm like, oh my gosh, aren't you stressing about this? What are you gonna do? And they're like, yeah, it's gonna be great. They're like, come see it. I was like, I may. You'd see a strange lady. It's just me. Don't be nervous. But it is that there was so much connectedness for these students that all of them talked about. And I think that is the stuff that, you know, educators you dream of, right? It's like, oh my gosh, our kids are gonna go to school and want to go to school and want to learn and continue to develop is just phenomenal and is so exciting and impressive because it's not happening everywhere. And we are very fortunate that it happens here. And it only happens here because of teachers who are committed and administrators who are committed and visions and supports that they're, that we're able to give our students. And I just, for one, as I previously said, as a parent of student who has had the great fortune of being able to participate, thank you.
Yeah, and I would just also add as the parent of one of the second graders who has seen every single one of the boy second graders engage in not critical thinking in my basement many times. Very impressive in terms of the focus and the dedication and the articulation they put forward.
Thank you. And they want to keep going. There's one little girl was like, oh, and I'm next, I'm gonna try it with popsicle sticks instead of the paper plates because I wanna, you know, it's like, the projects, you know, in her mind, the project's still going, which is amazing.
Hey, I tell them that failure is not failure. It stands for your first attempt in learning. So, that's critical thinking, like, not just because you do it the first time, it will be successful. And that's, that's the whole purpose behind it.
I was hearing the little kids talking about failure being okay. And then I was incredibly impressed by the 12th graders saying the same exact thing. I mean, that is not something you typically hear from high school students, that failure's okay. I mean, usually they're running as far from failure as possible. So, hearing that language of failure, and the kindergartner who was showing me his pencil case and, you know, how the first one failed, he used the word failure.
Yep.
It's fantastic.
Thank you for another knockout performance.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you all very much.
And next year, obviously, we're booking it for an hour, not a half hour.
Actually, yeah, all my students were sad. They wanted to see the older students. And they were like, but we can't leave our table. People keep coming. And I said, oh, I'll tell them to send you a video.
The front lawn, Friday, 10 o'clock.
Yeah, that's, sorry, field trip, sorry.
But Rosie, you know, the high school kids like to go out to the elementary schools.
Oh, that's true.
They can come to you.
That's true. They can bring their planes.
I'm sure we could arrange that with, I mean, Dr. Sassoon does a lot of work with the kids in the academy and the engineering classes. So, you know, might be some interesting visits.
I totally will. Those airplanes are dynamite. So cool. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Stop talking about the airplanes now. So, we will now move on to our hearing of the public on non-agenda items. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. So, please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process or research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district employees as those are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcsdboard@ryeschools.org. Seeing no one here from the community, we will move on to the consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Jen Boyle, seconded by Kelsey Johnson. Let's take a look at our consent agenda, please. Consent agenda general.
Do you need to do anything with the...
No, it's all just...
Just because of the...
Yep, because they're all in there. Yeah. So, the question is related to the Board of Trustees' elections for BOCES. If we need to insert, since there are three candidates and there are three selections, there is no need to have individual votes. Just roll them through. Come on. All right. Moving on, consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. And consent agenda special education. Seeing no further questions, can I have a vote to approve the consent agenda, please? And that is six, nothing with one absence. On this evening's consent agenda, we approved our stadium light policy. I think this is a great way to highlight the board's work with the community in that there were community concerns that were brought forth to the Board of Education. And the Board of Education worked with the surrounding community members who would be most impacted by any change in the policy. And the board was able to take a balanced and measured approach for helping the needs of all of our community members. So, I want to give a special shout out and attention to our policy members of the board. We appreciate the effort on making sure that those things were balanced. In addition, as we've talked about, we approved the budget and trustee vote for the Southern Westchester BOCES. Southern Westchester BOCES provides shared educational and management services to schools and school districts in our geographical region. They provide resources ranging from technology assistance to special education and occupational educational programming. They are good partners of the district and we are happy to support the work that BOCES does on behalf of all of our students. And we will move to information and discussion number two, student privacy. Mrs. Boyle?
Yes, thank you very much. So, this policy, 5550, student privacy, there was no, there were no specific changes that were being recommended for this policy. It was up for a regular review by the policy committee as it was not looked at since 2003. And essentially, when you look at this, you'll see a lot of green, which, and some red. The, because there were no specific changes that were being recommended, a lot of what we did here was to clean up flow of the document, organization of the document. So, there are pieces that were in different places that have been now moved around. And we also wanted to make sure that it was very clear that this was, anything in the document was related to student privacy specifically because that's what this is covering. So, we tried to organize it so that it had the survey pieces, student survey section all together, physical examinations all together, and then kept some of the other pieces that were already in there. So, those do not have any red or green associated with them. So, if, oh, actually, so this is not, I just noticed that unfortunately, it looks like a piece of this still needs to be deleted. That was deleted, but now it doesn't look like it was deleted. So, there was a section in physical examinations that we had deleted, but I don't know why it's not showing up as deleted, so that there might be a technical issue. It's probably a technical issue, yes. So, the, under physical examinations, the second paragraph has been taken out.
The one that's scooched?
Scooched?
Say?
Yes.
That's my technical word.
That's your technical word, yes. So, it's...
Indented.
Right. So, it's, we removed language around invasive physical examinations because it's not something that...
We would do.
It happens for our district. So, we'll have to go back and make sure that, I think, it looks like everything else is fine. But that's just one thing to note as you're reviewing it. So, if you, if anyone has any comments or questions, please send them along as this is our first reading of this policy and hopefully we can make sure that, yeah, whatever's, for whatever reason it's doing that, I don't know.
It looks like it's a board docs issue because of the way it got indented and...
Right. I'm sure it is.
Scooched.
Your word.
Okay. So, we'll bring this forward for a second reading at our next meeting, but please send along any comments or questions that you have. Thank you.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to communications to and from the board. Since our last meeting, we had a policy committee meeting, which we just received an update on. Anything further for that?
We spent a lot of our time in the policy committee meeting last week talking about student attendance, our student attendance policy. So, we're doing a bit of a deep dive on that and trying to make sure that anything that is connected in other policies is consistent. So, that's the work that we're doing right now on, on student attendance.
Great. The professional learning committee also met. The committee is looking at the three goals related to the professional learning document plan that the district has. And it was a nice reflection of where and how the district has done related to those three goals for this current year. And then really looking forward to what will and where can and should the district go from here based on the reflection and their ability to work through those goals so far. So, there'll be another meeting further in the spring related to that work. And it looks like we've got a whole slew of meetings coming up. So, board members, make sure you check your calendars and assignments so you can be in attendance at your meetings and come back and report to everybody. If you need help with a reminder of what your committee is, we're more than happy to help. Just let me know. All right. Any other general communications to and from the board? Nope. Okay, seeing none. Just a reminder that we will meet now on May 2nd. And that will be our budget hearing and we will get an athletics update. So, we look forward to that. So, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Christopher Pedo, seconded by Tom Stein. All those in favor? That's six to zero, one absence. Thank you, everybody. And again, thank you to our students and our families for tonight. We really enjoyed it. Have a great evening. And we'll see you at the parade on Saturday. All right.